Welcome to the Bojor City Council Regular Meeting, Tuesday, June 7th. First we'll have the call to order, the invocation by Councilman Jeffrey Darby, the pledge of allegiance by Councilman Tom Harvey. Please stand.
Let us pray. Holy Father, we thank you for this time that we come here to this place. We thank you for those who are here. We pray for them. We pray for their family members. We ask you, Lord God, to continue to bless us and keep us in your care. Thank you for your kindness and your goodness and your grace and your mercy. Father, we pray for those who are hurting, those who are sick among us. We ask you, Lord God, to give them deliverance, in Jesus' name. We ask, Lord, that you give us direction in the business of this city, that we do all things to the welfare of those we serve. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
All present?
We'll approve the minutes of the May 17th, 2016 Regular Meeting. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Counsel, please cast your vote. We'll approve today's agenda.
Counsel, we had a requested add-on under new business, which would have been introduced in ordinance appropriating $130,000 from the Riverboat Gaming Capital Projects Fund to split the cost of master planning the National Cyber Research Park with the Bojor Parish Police Jury. But I believe y'all were wanting more information on this issue.
There were several councilmembers requesting.
Several councilmembers had more questions on this issue. So it'll be introduced at the next meeting, which will be June 21st.
Okay. Thank you. We've been motioned to approve today's.
Do I may way approve the agenda? Second.
Counsel, please cast your vote.
Wait. Now.
Any ceremonial matters?
No, sir.
Committee reports?
No, sir.
Before we go to item one, an unfinished business, I'd like the NPC Director, Sam Orzegui, to come up and we've got some new information that everyone may want to hear before we start the next item.
Okay, just to update you, of course, our public hearing that was delayed from last month for the proposed Walmart Supercenter of North Bojor is this coming Monday at 2:00 here in the council chambers. But just this week Walmart has requested, I pulled their application for request for 24-hour operations from our agenda. We will do that at the meeting during our approval of the agenda section at the beginning. And that will enable them to be open from 6:00 a.m. to midnight by law.
Okay.
But they have requested that be removed from our agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Sam. We'll do this like we did last time. I'm sure you're aware of it. We'll have five people speak for three minutes. The clerk will have a timer. You know, when you hear the timer go off, just kind of wrap it up, if you will. Phil, do you want to go ahead and read?
I got it. Adopt an ordinance to enlarge the limits and boundaries of the city of Bojor City by annexing 99.09 acres located on the east side of Airline Drive, south of Wimple Road, and north of Airline Parks Estate subdivision, and on the east and west sides of Airline Drive, generally on the northwest and northeast corners of Airline Drive and Wimple Road. This property is currently zoned RA residential agriculture, but a portion is currently undergoing the rezoning process to a commercial zoning classification. Section 33 Township 19 North Range 13 West and Section 4 Township 18 North Range 13 West, Bojor Parish, Louisiana, final reading.
Some move?
Second.
We usually ask again for and against. We'll ask anybody that's for the Walmart to come up and speak. I know we got. Where's Mr. Lotterbach?
Yeah, I'd like to call him. Matt Lotterbach, first, is that all right?
Yes, sir. Matt? Phil, do we have a sign-in sheet?
There's a sign-in sheet up there. I need names, addresses printed on there, please.
We know that. It's gonna be a while.
Mr. President, what was your time limit rules on this?
Five people for three minutes.
Five people for three?
Yes.
All right, good evening.
Evening, Matt.
I know there's been some debate and talk about everything that's going on here. I just wanted to come up and speak on behalf of the men and women of the Bojor City firefighters and kind of clear the air about anything that's been brought up as far as why we've been here in the last few meetings and why we are so strongly in agreement with the city's idea of keeping Walmart inside the city limits. Most of us in this room have gone through the layoffs in 2009 and have made promises, along with a handful of y'all that were on this board at the time, not to ever go through that again. And we just feel that it's going to be a catastrophic move if the tax dollars generated from Walmart are not still in the city. And that really speaks on its own. That's why we've been here. We understand everyone's side of the story, but our side is where it's at. And we do appreciate the move that the council made three meetings ago. And if y'all have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Well, I'd like specifically to address the fact of that there was some type of coercion or people being forced to come to the meeting out of obligation.
Absolutely not. No, we, as an association, blasted out an email and text that we do and word of mouth and asked everyone to be here. We did get permission from the chief to show up in uniform, so we would distinguish ourselves as members of the department and also members of the association. But absolutely not. We weren't forced to be here at all.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, Matt.
Appreciate your time.
Does anyone else like to speak for the Walmart? You're for the Walmart?
I'm for annexation.
That's what we're discussing.
I think that's what this discussion's about.
Go ahead.
My name's Howard Davis. Sorry. And I live in North Bojor. And I am for annexation, but I am against Walmart.
Mr. Davis, I'm sorry, just repeat your name and your address.
Howard Davis, 328 Hunter's Hollow, Bojor City, Louisiana, 71111.
Okay.
And I am for annexation and I'm against Walmart coming. The reason I'm for annexation is I, along with, I think, I don't, I only know the people I talked to, but most of the people I talked to in North Bojor aren't necessarily against annexation. We're certainly not against the police department. We love Bojor City Police Department. We're not against the fire department. We feel like we have a fantastic fire department as well as police department. And we recognize that if there are two stores, there's going to create a tax burden on Bojor if that, this is not annexed. The other part is that there are services that a store like Walmart, if they come in, would need if they build there. That would be a reason for annexation. We are not for, I'm not for, I'm not against annexation, I'm for annexation. What I am against is Walmart moving here. I'm against any 24-hour operations being there. I understand Walmart pulled their application, but if you read the letter that communicates them intending to do that, it says, "We're willing to, for a time, not be 24 hours." Their plan is still 24 hours. I've talked to two councilmen. Y'all's understanding is, is that when, what's been communicated by two of your councilmen is that the council as a whole is convinced that when this Walmart builds in North Bojor, they're planning on shutting down or making the current Walmart a distribution center. If the current situation doesn't change and Walmart is where it is, tax situation doesn't change. Same revenues is received. Taxpayer's the one who pays the sales taxes. Bojor receives it. I'm all for that. I'm not against that. But if North Bojor, if y'all accept the annexation, which I'm all for, but allow Walmart to build there, it's going to create a major conflict between the residents of North Bojor who aren't represented on the council for obvious reasons and the city council and the leadership of Bojor City. The North Bojor corridor is a wonderful area. It's a wonderful area that needs to be developed. It needs to be developed well. And what's happened here is Walmart's kind of beat everybody to the punch instead of us being ahead of the game and developing that area. The MPC recommendations in terms of the city planning basically says the intent is for us not to be in suburban sprawl. And that's why we're against Walmart being here. But we are, I am for, and I represent a large percentage of people who live in North Bojor, for annexation. I'm not, I'm not for trying to get into a political melee between the police jury and the city council. I'm fine with y'all being the drivers behind that, but I want y'all to represent the interest of the citizens who are going to be affected by this project even while y'all take annexation. Thank you. I'm opening any questions.
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Davis?
Well, my understanding of this, that proposition that's before us is the annexation. And so we are not obligated in any way to necessarily vote for Walmart. As a matter of fact, there's still a lot to be learned about Walmart at the hearing that is yet to be conducted at the MPC. So regardless of the vote I make today, it's not an indication of my support or lack of support of Walmart. It would be, just as you have spoken very well, that the issue is the annexation itself and it does not obligate any councilman to vote for Walmart.
Sure, and I appreciate that. And I just want to affirm that it'd be a messy situation if this is in the parish and it takes tax dollars away from Bojor City. I acknowledge that and I respect that y'all are having to try to guard the current situation. So I just want to acknowledge that there are a large percentage of people in North Bojor that feel this way, but we're still strongly against North Bojor, I mean, there being a supercenter in North Bojor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. All right, he spoke for it now. Mr. Sawyer, I guess you want to speak against it. We'll start to do the number one, okay?
My name's Kyle Sawyer. You've seen me here a few times, I believe. What I'd like to start with first and most is I support our Bojor City Fire and Police Department. For over a year now, I've had blue lights at my house. I support, I've had them for over a year. I wouldn't do the job they do. I respect everything that the fire or the police do, first responders, what they do. So when I say this, I respect the man that came up here and stood and talked earlier. I know where he comes from. But I'm pretty good at numbers. I'm very good at economics. I own a business. What I'm gonna tell you is, is that this is the wrong location. Wimple Road and Airline Drive is not the right location. I'm not saying that, that, you know, that if Walmart was to put one up here, at best it needs to be a half mile back down the road. If y'all want to annex that property, let them buy that property, annex that, that's fine, but you putting this traffic on Wimple Road that the MPC and the police jury already have an issue with. I don't know how you can vote for something that they already have issues with as far as for, when do you do at least three or four lane Wimple Road if you're gonna run it all the way through? You've got an interchange right there at Wimple Road and Old Bradley Road that if we don't do something as far as for the way that interchange right there is offset, you're gonna get somebody killed. I don't know who's gonna take the responsibility for this. Those are issues that the MPC and the police jury are gonna have to work on. You already have, and I know it was addressed, but they were in total, Walmart was against it not being, them being allowed to make it a 24-hour center. I'm in total agreement, but they may come in this way, but they may come back to you later and go, "We want it to be a 24-hour center." I believe that will happen. Walmart would not sign a contract that, at least they said they would not, that if they shut down the Bojor location, which they said they're not shutting down the current location, that they would reimburse the city, the parish, and everybody for the money that they spend. So there are no guarantees here. One of the things is the will of the people. The will of the people north of 220 do not want this. You have not had one person that has said, "We want Walmart north of 220." There's not one person that has come up in the past eight or nine months that I've been here and spoke for it, other than the, I understand, the firemen, the policemen. They feel like there's no way, and you check with the insurance man that insures the city, there's no way that the city is going to lay off firemen because they're not gonna lose their fire rating. You're not gonna do that just for what y'all insure. You're not gonna lose your fire rating, ask your insurance man. You're not fixed to do that. You're not fixed to lay off any of your policemen. We're already shorthanded. They've got more territory and more to cover right now. You add another Walmart, you're gonna need more policemen. So all I ask you to consider is that this is the wrong location. Wimple Road is not the right location. Make them relocate somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sawyer. Mr. Graves?
Good afternoon, gentlemen. My name is Whitley Graves. I live at 119 Autumn Creek in Bojor City. I do live outside the city limits. In my job, I'm trained to be paranoid, suspicious, and try to predict the worst-case scenario for the future so that I can try and avoid it. In this particular situation, I have been to all 48 of the 48 contiguous United States. I have never seen two Walmart supercenters this close together. Sam's in a supercenter. That's probable, but not two Walmart supercenters. My suspicion, that I cannot confirm at this time, is that the current location of Walmart on Airline Drive at the end of Douglas and the end of Melrose Street will become a distribution center. It will increase the truck traffic on Airline Drive tremendously. It'll make that portion of the Airline Drive Avenue a desolate area. Businesses will move out. Nobody wants to go eat where they smell diesel fuel all the time. Nobody wants to go in and shop at a store where they have to avoid trucks coming in and out all the time. It's a perfect location for them. If I were Walmart, that's where I would want my distribution center. The city is already building one road, concrete, from Douglas to Victon Drives, which will accommodate their coming and going out of that present location even better. When they hit Interstate 220, which is less than a half a mile away, they can hit all the Walmarts in this area with ease. Halton, Blanchard, Pines Road, Yuri Drive. The only one that's not on that agenda is the Shreveport-Barksdale Highway Supercenter. But that's easy to get to also by coming up Barksdale Boulevard, once they get off of 31, 32 and come across the Jimmy Davis Bridge, if we ever get the birds moved out. But it is a, if anybody else on this council has that same suspicion, I ask you to reconsider the annexation, because the annexation is strictly and solely for the purpose of Walmart moving out there. That is the catalyst for the action that's being taken by the city council. And it would be a disservice to the people of Bojor City to make that portion of Airline Drive that is now thriving become a desolate area, become industrialized instead of commercial, and cause the increased traffic in that area to cause such a headache already is all of us who drive up and down that road, which I try to avoid between the hours of 3:00 and 6:00 p.m. The traffic backs up all the way from Interstate 220 all the way down past Douglas Drive. Stop and go. The accident reports are astronomical from the rear-end collisions that happen because of the traffic that's already there. So I'm just asking the members of this council, if you have the same suspicions, if you have the same clouded vision of the future that I have of what's actually gonna happen to that area of town, if the annexation comes in at Wimple Road and Airline Drive, is that something you really need to consider? I propose to this council that if Walmart wants to build there, Walmart will build there if the MPC thinks that it's a good idea and so does the police jury. Then there's nothing to stop this city council from annexing it into the city. There's a 4% tax rate that comes to this parish. If it's inside the city, it's 3 and 1/4 cents that comes to Bojor City and 3/4 of a cent that goes to the parish. The parish won't like it, but Walmart can come into the city after it builds there if the MPC and the police jury agree that that's a good location. The city can take it in then. I would suggest to this council at this time to not annex that property. Wait and see what Walmart is going to do. Are they gonna shut down the present location and make it a distribution center? Because that's still in operation. That's not against what they've promised you. It's just not a retail store anymore. And see what kind of problems Walmart is going to bring to Bojor City if they go through with their plans. Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Could I ask you a question, Whit? On the, on the, and I'm just, I wanted to make sure I had this correct. If Walmart was there in the parish and they weren't in the city, their taxation level would go up if they came into the city?
No, I don't believe that's so, Mr. Larkin. I believe what, it said at a 4%. If it's out in the parish, the parish gets all 4%. If it comes into the city, then the parish maintains 3/4 of a cent and the city gets 3 and 1/4 cent. I believe that that's how the distribution makes. But because of the way our tax base, with the ceiling that we can put on taxes designated by the state, I mean, we can't, we can't go over what the state says the maximum we can charge on taxes, especially on revenue from retail stores. So the way that I understand that it is now, it's 4%. The difference is, is how it's divided. If it's in the city, the city gets 3 and 1/4. If it's in the parish, gets 3/4 of a cent. If it's in the parish, the parish gets all 4%.
Is that correct?
I don't know. Mr. Buffington? Certainly.
Is that correct? No?
You know, the state just passed the additional 1 cent. So the total tax within the city or within, if it's done within the city limits, the total tax is, I believe, 9%. 5% goes to the state. No, it's 10%. 5% goes to the state. 5% goes to all the taxing jurisdictions within the city and the parish. The city has 2 and 1/2% of that. If they're outside the city limits, obviously, the city can't tax retail transactions outside of its jurisdictions. So the parish rate, you know, there is a portion that only applies outside of the city limits, but the most the city can ever take is 2 and 1/2%.
Okay. So again, just, if Walmart's there and they're in the parish and you go buy something there, the guy that buys something there pays 10% tax?
No, sir.
Oh, okay. Well, that was, now you're getting to the heart of what I was, so the tax is less for, Walmart can sell things cheaper there if they stay in the parish? I mean, I mean, someone can buy something there.
Someone could pay, would pay less based on the tax burden that would be implied. Again, Walmart's sale price is the same. It's just what the customer has to pay because of the additional taxes. That's correct. It would be less in the parish than if they bought it in the city limits.
Okay. And, good, thank you. And so, Whit, my, my question would be, what would be Walmart's motivation for wanting to come in the city once they're all set up?
Oh, the wonderful police and fire department ratings for insurance purposes. The reduced amount of cost for water. They're not gonna use a whole lot of water. Walmart is not gonna use the same amount of water and storage that an apartment complex would use, obviously. They'll only have maybe five bathrooms in the whole place, four for shoppers and one for employees. They're gonna do probably very little watering because out of the 27 acres, I understand 26 acres of it is gonna be covered up with building or asphalt. They're gonna be doing very little watering. But it's the advancement or the obtaining of a class, Fire Chief, where are you? You're Class II right now?
Yes.
What's Bojor Parish?
I think it's four.
Class III? I know they're not a Class I. My insurance rates aren't that low.
So it's services?
Under the police department, the fire department, they've got great tax insurance benefits because of the, the better fire department response is viewed by those who classify the police and fire departments, and that goes to the insurance companies, and it goes down from there.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Anybody else? Thank y'all very much, gentlemen.
Does anyone else like to speak?
My name is Stan Miller. I live in the Autumn Creek subdivision. I spoke at the last meeting briefly, and I still have a concern because of the neighborhood I live in, as well as five other subdivisions, all fear deeply that our quality of life, once a Walmart is put into this area, would go downhill bad. And I agree with Whit, as far as commercial development is concerned along this corridor, I'm for it, but I'm against the Walmart because of what happens in their parking lots. They can control their theft and other types of crime that goes on within their store with their own security department, but they, they can't control what goes on in their parking lots. And if you've been by one at night, you can see what I'm talking about. My concern, or my proposal, I guess, would be, or question, I'm not against commercial development, as I said. And if there's other planned commercial development in this 99-acre annexation, has any consideration been given to the fact that you could split this annexation between north and south of Wimple? There's 34 acres involved with the Walmart, and that's all north of There's 34 acres involved with the Walmart and that's all north of Wimpel. Everything south, do you have other development that's going on? I don't think there's many people would, would oppose that at all. But I do know that, uh, you know, with the MPC meeting coming up, there will be a lot of people that will attend that too and, uh, there will be a lot of opposition to it. If there is planned development that you want to go ahead and get on with it, you know, I don't think you'll meet, meet much opposition for, uh, annexing that part, but just leave the, uh, the, uh, north side of Wimpel until this is completely settled. Any questions for me?
Could you just take your address out loud, Mr. Miller?
201 Creighton Ridge, Bossier City, 71111.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Sawyer made the comment that it wasn't necessarily against Walmart as much as the location and that's what you're saying as well?
Yes, the location. I'm not against the Walmart in other, in another location, obviously, but, uh, the people that, uh, that live in our neighborhood are certainly convinced, you know, that our property values are going to suffer along with those that live in Rosedale, those that live in Lakewood, those that live in the Crossing and, and also in Cross Creek and, uh, Bio Bend. All those neighborhoods are going to, uh, to see an impact of this and, and most of the people, as you've seen, there have been, uh, over 2,000 people, I believe, that's, has signed petitions, you know, to keep Walmart away from this particular location.
So just, uh, just as a purely speculative thing, if Walmart situated Catty Corner southeast in the southeast, eastern quadrant?
Southeastern quadrant.
South of the road and across the other, in the, uh, to the southeast of that drugstore there?
Uh, the CVS.
So is, is that a location then that those that are, is that something that you, for instance, would say, well, I'm not against that?
Well, my own situation, living in Autumn Creek, that would be a, a little bit different situation. It probably would take a lot of traffic off of Wimpel that we're concerned with, especially Wimpel at Brownlee, that would help some. But I think you'll find a lot of opposition still from the people in Rosedale and Lakewood because that affects them more than what it does, you know, on the other side for his, for his now proposed.
Good, well, thank you.
Any other question?
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kendall Brantley. I live at 1104 Cardiff Circle in, uh, Rosedale subdivision. And, uh, I do have a problem with trying to put something behind the CVS and to the, the, uh, south and east of, of where the proposed location is, just to get that on the record. That, that would be a bigger problem than the one that's ahead of us right now. Uh, my opposition to this annexation is strictly related to Walmart in 24-hour or even an 18-hour operation. Because whether it's their 18 hours or 24 hours, you're still going to cover up all of that stormwater impoundment that you've got there. You're still going to have all of that traffic. You're still going to have all of that potential crime. You're still going to have all of that litter. You're still going to have all of that light pollution. You're going to have all of these problems and it may make it less. And as stated earlier, I firmly believe that that is a temporary situation and in a very short amount of time, they would come back to this board and to the MPC and ask to go to 24 hours for economic reasons. So they're not going to build that infrastructure or that, that investment and not have it be a full 24-hour complete replacement of what they've got. I don't know about this distribution center. I don't know if that's, if that's going to happen. And I can tell you one thing, it's going to be either a distribution center or it's going to be a vacant store. My money is on it being a vacant store. And as you, members of this board and, and Mr. Mayor, I wouldn't want you to have to look at that and know that that was something you could have prevented. You don't want to have a sign sitting up there that says this vacant store or this distribution center brought to you by the city council, Bossier City and the mayor and the MPC. Because you have the power to top this. You have the power to hold this. And as far as the, the impact on the tax base and Walmart moving out into the parish and, and, um, and abandoning Bossier, I, I highly doubt that. I think what would happen is that they would actually put the money back into the store they have and try to compete with Kroger and, and actually get some, put something back into the millions that they've taken out of this community over the years. Uh, I think the reason why this comes up right now is exactly that. I think that is because Kroger is there now and they want to get away from it, get back, you know, start a new, a new life elsewhere. They've done that everywhere I've, that I've lived that has a Walmart. They've done the same thing. They sit about 20 years in a store and then they boot the bigger, better one closer to the market that they want to pursue and away from the competition that has grown up around them. So it's very simple for them. Uh, I don't blame them for being who they are, but I don't want them in my backyard. Uh, again, there, there are a lot of quality of life issues. North Bossier, what it has going for it right now is that it's a beautiful area. Uh, it does have traffic issues already and we all know that. We all live with that because we like the area we live in. But you put the Walmart into this, it makes that much less attractive. And that, that with the MPC group and if you'd like, I can share it with you. There's, there's published data to support. There's actually a study that shows when you put a Walmart into an area, a two-mile perimeter around that, the property values decline. There's a national average of increase and I can't quote you the number off the top of my head, but the difference between the national and when you're two miles from Walmart's about 6%. And I'm not prepared to take 6% loss on my capital investment and what I have 30-year mortgage on, nor would you. You wouldn't want this to be live, you know, next to Stone Bridge or any other nice neighborhood. And we consider Rosedale and we consider Autumn Creek and we consider Rosedale or, um, Lakewood, nice areas. So we don't think that it's suitable to put a 24-hour Walmart, whether it's 18 hours or 24 hours, next to those nice of areas. It's just not suitable. Those belong closer to other big box retailers. Now, you've got sprawl and growth that is coming and, you know, and it's, it's inevitable to a degree. But why not control that and force that to be closer to light properties? And so that, you know, it's a little bit more accepted. Uh, it was mentioned in the last, uh, meeting we went, that I went to in the MPC, uh, that the, um, you know, the values of the Green Acres, Old Green Acres subdivision that not actually decreased, they'd actually grown during the time that Walmart's there. Yeah, they've grown. They wouldn't have grown, they would have grown much more if you hadn't had the Walmart there, in my opinion. But think about this. What does the east side of that subdivision look like versus the west side? It's quite a difference. It's a much nicer area the further you get away from it. And that's why we're here and that's why we're having this, you know, this opposition. That's why we're so vocal about it. That's why we're getting involved in politics, you know? It's nothing anybody wanted to, to get involved in that's in this room, I'm sure. But it is important to us. It is our, our investment. It is our property and we ask that you protect it by declining this annexation. Thank you. Any, any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
Is it Mr. Brantley?
Brantley. Yes.
So do, do you know how far away a Walmart would need to be from where you live before you quit being unhappy with it?
That's a rhetorical question. Uh, I would say where it is right now is perfectly fine with me. Sir?
Or farther.
Or farther. You know, the, the studies that I've looked at, and I try to be objective when I look at things and I did, I researched this and there's, you know, Realty Track put together a, a, a data mine of data related to the locations of these stores. And interestingly, it targets increase your property values over the national average. Walmarts decline your property values. Now, why is that? A lot of different reasons for that, but it's probably the same reason why we're all in this, in this room and probably the same reasons you wouldn't have this kind of opposition if you were to put a, you know, a doctor's office or a professional complex or a bank or something that's not 24-hour litter, you know, uh, heavy volume like a Walmart supercenter. It's just not suitable for a neighborhood. And that's what this is. This is a nice neighborhood. We want to keep it that way. So we appreciate your consideration. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. I had a question, Sam. Sam, is the, um, Walmart that is there now, it's zoned for a, I guess it's zone B3 with a 24-hour exception. Is that what it is?
Yes, sir.
So, um, if they wanted to turn that into a trucking distribution center, they would have to have I-1 or I-2 zoning?
Warehousing is allowed in a B3, but you'd have to look at the intensity of what they would want to do there. It's quite possible they would need to, uh, change that zoning classification to a light industrial use.
But what they could do is, as those folks are saying, they could turn it into a distribution. I mean, it is possible.
It's, I'd want to look at that in the codes a little further before I made a commitment to an answer. But typically, a distribution warehouse like that is a light industrial use, but warehousing is allowed in a B3 also. You have to look at the intensity of what they want to do.
Thank you. We got number five, uh, if anybody would like to speak.
Hi, my name is Linda Potter Valverde and I live at 1002 Creole, Bossier City, 71111. And my back door would be looking at the Walmart if we moved it to the southeast section behind CVS. I keep hearing that Walmart from Walmart, that Walmart's not going to close, but yet they won't do anything. I'm against the annex because I feel like it's just a done deal. They get the annexing, it's going to happen. I also understand it might be a personnel issue, that some people may lose their jobs. And I really feel sorry for those people. I really do. I hope they don't. I hope, I would like you to consider if that really and truly is your, you know, what's, you know, negotiating this and stuff, is that you add an amendment that if it does go through, that you will not lay off any employee, city employee due to budget for the next five years. Not just this police and the fire people, firemen. Everywhere I've lived, they've closed down Walmarts. You know, 6 to 12 sounds great, but you have little kids that are still trying to go to sleep and there's people driving in and out from some of the, you know, neighborhoods, getting through some of the neighborhoods to get to Walmart. You know, you'll have alcohol sales. I mean, I, and we really, the city of, the city of Bossier really does not need another empty buil- building. You've got Kroger, you've got the Michaels on 80, you've got Ryan's already over there and nobody wants that right now. You're about to have Kmart. You don't need another one. And if the distribution center, like you said, the whole, someone else said, the whole area will go down and it will be a blighted area.
Counsel, do you have any, any questions or for vote?
Oh, uh, I'd like to see, show how many people are here actually opposed. Stand up or something, just so we can know how many pros are here. Oppose, oppose.
No one's, no one has voted yet. We had, we had two people that spoke.
You can sit down now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one last question, Sam, too, and get around to it.
Got, Tim, you got a question?
Yes, uh, um, one more question for Sam. What, what is the, um, um, what, what is the, if you're not a 24-hour operation, if I, if I'm a store and I say, well, I'm not going to operate 24 hours and, and that might win some people over, um, it, it certainly influenced me somewhat. So what, what's the next cutoff? I mean, what's the difference between 24 and 23, say?
By right, 6:00 AM to midnight, by right.
That, that's, that's where the, that's where it just goes default.
That's the by right, use by right, operational hours in a B3 zoning classification.
So that's what controls that, not them saying, well, I'm not going to be 24 and then I'm going to be 22 or something?
The reason the store is asking for the 24 or why they're having to ask for the 24 because they're within 300 feet of a residential zoning classification, that would be the apartments across the street. If they were not within 300 feet of a residential zoning classification, 24 hours is a use by right in a B3 zoning classification.
What is B2?
6 to 10 and by public hearing, they can request to be open till midnight.
And can a Walmart be in a B2?
Not that size. B2 is limited. No single use within a B2 zoning can be more than 15,000 square feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, again, before we vote, do you have any questions?
I'm going to abstain from this vote for, uh, potential financial conflicts.
Counsel, please cast your vote.
Those of us who were here just in the back seat, first, take a short break and leave.
Yes, sir, you sure can. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Whit.
All right, fellas.
Item number two, adopt an ordinance to authorize the mayor to appropriate $18,000 to come from the 1991 Streets and Drainage Fund to be used to relocate a drainage pipe that drains Martin Lane and to be located between 1305 and 1309 Martin Lane. Final reading.
So move.
Second. Any questions from the audience on this issue? Counsel, any questions? Please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance approving the acquisition of the property described as Lot 375, East Shreveport Subdivision, and authorizing the mayor to sign any and all documents necessary to acquire property necessary for property acquisition in the old downtown area of Bossier City for the Bossier Reenvisiting Project. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance approving the acquisition of the required right-of-way from the required from Arrow's Properties LLC for the project as described in Exhibit A, authorizing the mayor to sign any and all documents necessary to acquire property necessary for property acquisition in the old downtown area of Bossier City for the Bossier Reenvisiting Project. Final reading.
So move. Second. Any questions from the audience? Counsel, any questions? Please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate $90,000 to come from the 1991 Streets and Drainage Fund to be used to partner with Bossier Parish Police Jury to rebuild and improve a 2,000-foot section of the Monica Lot Road. Final reading.
So move. Second. Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please vote.
Adopt an ordinance authorizing and providing for issuance of $4 million of public improvement sales tax revenue bond, Series ST 2016 of the City of Bossier City, State of Louisiana, prescribing the form, fixing the details and providing for the rights of the owners thereof, providing for payment of the principal of and interest on such bonds and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Final reading.
So move. Second.
Counsel, just to bring you up to date on this, we actually ended up with $245,000 additional on top of the $4 million. I was with the mayor and experienced a bond sold at a hefty premium or a healthy premium which benefited the city, so.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
New business, adopt an ordinance declaring that a... New Business, adopt an ordinance declaring that an emergency did exist in the City of Bossier City which affected property, public health and safety due to a sewer main rupture in the alleyway one block from YH between traffic and East Third Street, first and final reading.
So move. Second. Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC petitioner Circle K Stores Incorporated, location 2470 Barksdale Boulevard, request rezoned from RLD Residential Low Density District to B3 General Business District for proposed convenience store with fuel cells.
So move. Second. Counsel, there was a, you know, this is the vacant lot there on the corner of McDade and Barksdale. There was no opposition to this application and the vast majority of this site is already zoned B3. There was a small portion that was included in the sale of this that was zoned residential and that was the purpose for this zoning application, just to make the entire site same zone.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC petitioner Circle K Stores Incorporated, location 2470 Barksdale Boulevard, request additional use approval for the sale of low-content alcohol for off-premise consumption at a convenience store.
So move. Second. Same site, the alcohol approval for their low-content sales.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Approved parade permit fee waiver for Green Acres Place HOA, July 4th parade, July 4th, 2016.
So move. Second. Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to hire one recreation maintenance worker, two positions, to replace the vacant position of Foreman One at Mike Wood Park in Parks and Recreation, first and final reading.
So move. Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Public hearing for the city's application to United States Department of Justice to participate in the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program.
Since this is a public hearing, I'd like to open it up, if anybody has anything to speak about. Okay.
Or close a public hearing.
Adopt a resolution endorsing the city's application to United States Department of Justice to participate in the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, first and final reading.
So move. Second. Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please vote.
Approved report of change order for the Arthur Raittig Park Flood Mitigation Project, an increase of $90,823.45. Total cost of contract with change order, $631,323.45.
So move. Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to hire an executive secretary to the mayor, first and final reading.
So move. Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to stabilize the north bank of Red Shoe Bayou at the Northeast Wastewater Treatment Plant, first reading.
So move. Second.
Well, I had a question.
Yes, sir.
Cliff. This is in reference to the, the funding mechanism for this project. I, I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to speak to you, but I'd spoken to the mayor yesterday and if it's the wishes of the council, I would like to have that money come from another funding source and I can discuss that with you later. But also, I spoke to the mayor and Mr. Hall and I'm going to be proposing an ordinance that we take the bond money, you know, the 22 and then the DEQ, I think we'll have 20 so far from them, and that that be specifically used on the five-year capital program, not to be used on any type of emergency repairs or anything else. And my rationale for that is that if we start robbing these bond funds for emergency repairs, then we're not going to end up doing necessary sewer work that we had planned on, therefore we get behind the curve. So do you concur?
I, I do, I understand what you're saying and I do concur with not using it for emergency repairs. This was part of a project list that was incorporated in the upgrade of the Northeast Wastewater Treatment Plant, so it was projected, it could be considered an emergency, so we can use whatever funding mechanism that you'd like to use. There are funds available in the contingency fund.
And the other question I had was if we can somehow be provided a schedule of what monies have been utilized from these bond proceeds outside of the five-year capital plan, so that we can get a grasp as to what the bond funds are owed back, so that we can pay for the five-year capital plan.
We can do that, we're, we're looking at that now so that we can take some contingency money and reimburse those bonds.
Okay, so, just so that, you know, we're all on the same page going forward and we're all aware, so, thank you.
So David, do you want to?
Do we want to use the sewer contingency fund to fund that?
Well, it's my idea, we, the $4 million that we just sold that was mentioned previously, we're using 3.6 for the revitalization, you know, for the water and sewer work that's being done there. We, roughly the proceeds are what, $4,250,000, so that leaves, what, $650,000, roughly? And I don't, was the project 700?
It was a little less than 700.
So, and whatever that difference is, you know, we can pull that from contingency.
Okay, sure.
So that's my recommendation and again, I'd spoken to the mayor regarding this, so.
Do you want to make that motion where it's going to come from, so we can?
Can I change?
Yeah, we can make a amendment.
That we can take the proceeds from how you directed it and I'll draft the ordinance and we'll. Then I'm, Phyllis, do you have that?
You want to take the proceeds from the savings from the $4 million bond issue and then the rest from the sewer contingency fund?
Whatever the excess is over the re-envisioning cost, whatever that ends up being for the water and sewer, if it runs over, then we'll, we'll have less. But I mean, the first thing that we're using that money for is to take care of the water and sewer reworks for the re-envisioning product, project and whatever that remaining balance is will be applied to this levee stabilization at the Northeast Plant. And then if there's more money required, then we'll take that from contingency.
Sewer contingency fund, okay. Yes, sir.
Is that your amendment for saving, then we'll make a amendment and then introduce, reintroduce it?
Yes.
I'll propose that amendment.
Okay.
Tell you what, let's just, next agenda meeting, I'll put a new ordinance on and we're going to reintroduce it anyway, so to just be added to the agenda and then we can add it to the agenda and introduce it and proceed that way.
What do you want to do with this ordinance? Just delete it?
Motion to postpone until the 21st?
Yeah, let's just remove it from the agenda and, and I'll introduce a new one. So it's, I retract that amendment and we'll remove it and we'll make a new ordinance.
Is that your motion to delete it, David?
Well, Tim has a question.
I, I just want to interject something. We recently, just as recent as a week ago, was at a meeting where we were talking about the very levee that separates this plant from the Red Shoe Bayou there and I learned at that meeting that any work that gets done on that levee now has to have what they call a 408 permit from the Corps of Engineers and it's a lengthy process and it specifically applies to this. And after further discussion, we learned that there is a, there's a recommendation to remove the main, the guideline levee from the ring levee that's around here so that this plant will no longer come under that 408. So maybe when you're doing the reevaluation of this, you might want to take into account those circumstances because they will have a lot to do with the time that it takes to get permission to do the work that you're planning, I think.
Tim, what meeting was that, was anybody from Bossier represented there since?
It was the, the Bossier Levee District has had a number of meetings since that flood with the Corps of Engineers and with representatives from the Corps of Engineers because we've been trying to get a permit for nine years to raise the levee. And in these meetings, we keep getting a turn down. And the particular meeting that I'm speaking of is one where we learned that, in fact, the process has to be reinstituted and has to be reinstituted under a new permitting process they have and it's called, and the, and the permit requires a 408H permit. Everybody ought to have one.
Is that something you can let the mayor know, so he can send a representative from Bossier like Cliff that's been in, in this? So we're all on the same page?
So we can't touch the levee?
You have to have a 408H permit to do that, I know that, I just learned it at a meeting.
So our sewer plant, this is going to flood?
Exactly.
And potentially cost tens of millions of dollars?
Exactly.
That's our federal government's work.
Smart, isn't it?
For a second to remove it from the agenda.
Yeah, Cliff, I mean, can you speak to any of this? I mean, is it news to you or?
I did hear about the addition to the guideline levee this morning. I'd heard rumors of it in the past, but I was not aware that we had to have the permit that he's speaking of to do the repairs on the levee that has been deteriorating, so.
That's because the permitting process that they now have was only initiated about three months ago.
Okay.
Had you made, had you made application prior to that, their process was different.
So, and it's my understanding the levee is being compromised, is it not, it to a?
It's to the point where it's, we have bank failure up to the asphalt road around the top of the levee.
And that, that, was that way in on?
It, it may well.
It's 570, almost 600 feet of levee.
What's, what's the, what's the process that the city, they apply to the Corps?
Yes, the Corps of Engineers controls that, yes.
So who would, who would go initiate that process immediately?
The city.
I'm clear on the city, what I'm saying is, right now, we need a course of action and a plan of action that's, that needs to be implemented as fast as we can.
We're on the same track, that entire guideline levee is on that same track.
So.
I understand.
Any questions from the audience about this goat rope going on? Yeah, we got one.
I already have a second, I have a motion and a second.
We want to delete it, correct?
Just to delete, a motion and a second to delete the item off the agenda.
Counsel, please vote.
Motion to delete.
Approved in accordance with Louisiana Revised Statute 43:150 and Revised Statute 43:174, the Bossier Press Tribune is the City of Bossier City's official journal for a one-year period effective June 1st, 2016 through June 1st, 2017.
So move.
Second. Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please vote.
Adopt an ordinance declaring that an emergency did exist in the City of Bossier City which affected property, public health and safety due to a sewer main rupture in the 1300 block and 1100 block of Airline Drive, first and final reading.
So move.
Second. Cliff, how's this going? Or Mike, or Ben, or? Where, where are we at with this project?
Okay, well, we still have the gravity line that's being replaced, that feeds from Murphy Street, or starts at Murphy Street. These were not part of that project, these were panels that were dropped and we had an old eight-inch sewer line right there in front of the old Western Store.
Yeah.
And it was abandoned, so it was starting to collapse and when that happened, the panels there started to collapse. Well, we noticed when we were bypassing for that gravity line that there was an area right around that manhole at Murphy that there was no, no dirt there anymore and it had compromised underneath that panel right there. So we put flowable, flowable fill in there to bring everything back up to grade. And those two portions of it are completed, that's what this ordinance is about. The emergency for the gravity main, though, that goes to that big airline lift station, that's probably only about, I don't know, maybe 30, 40% complete at this point.
Thank you. Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please vote.
Adopt a resolution to fill a vacancy in the Public Works Department, first and final reading.
So move. Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please vote.
Introduce an ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the attached public-private partnership agreement with Manchak Consulting Group Incorporated and otherwise provide with respect their two, first reading.
So move.
Second. Anyone here like to speak about this? Just same thing. State your name, address, limits at three minutes, please, ma'am.
Hi, good afternoon, Councilman, I'm Jennifer Calhoun, I live at 907 Ricky Place in Bossier City, 71112. First and foremost, with what's been presented to the public, the partnership, as we call it, this is going to affect not 40, but 46 people. And of those 46, 11 I know personally. And of that 11, you can't tell me, out of the, well, the 46, you can't tell me that you're going to save $3.5 million is just from taking those, you know, that money from the city and being able to utilize each one of each five compartments. You, you've list, you know, we already have a list of the, you know, the, what Manchak is going to come in and they've already replaced one, one superintendent. And that's written in the actual agreement. But when you talk about the organizational chart, you're dismissing 46 members. How can that be, say, how can that save the City of Bossier $3.5 million? It's not going to, because in the actual agreement as well, the five superintendents that are going to be replaced, all five, well, the fifth one doesn't exist right now, because when he, when he heard of this, he left. So four of your five superintendents that, that are on board right now are Class IV licensed in the water, or whatever their field of specialty is. In the agreement, they only have two people of the five that have to be Class IV licensed, which means my family and every other's family around here, you're going to take their health into consideration. These Class IV licenses are not taken lightly. I do have a son that works for the Shreveport, City of Shreveport. These licenses don't, they're not lightly taken, they are studied for, they are classified. You have, you have to stay for weeks for this. You only have two people of the five that have license? Not to mention, you have an engineering firm going to run the city, the water, water department. department. And how many successful cases can you bring to me and say, oh, it worked in this case because an engineering firm who has engineering background ran and successfully ran and continues to run a water department? None. None. Because they don't know how to run a water department. They can't replace that water department. And in the, in the case that, God help me, please, and I pray daily that this doesn't happen, it saves these forty-six people are lost and they maintain whatever the amount of people they need to maintain. Is Manchak going to come in and insure these people? Are they going to maintain their benefits? Are they going to do all this? Or is the City of Bossier still maintaining this situation? So are, are we really saving here? Are you unemploying forty-six people? And the City of Bossier still pays for insurance, benefits, 401K, retirement. And as well, in their agreement, they say, well, we'll also need money to get these different licenses. Well, you're only licensed two. How can that be agreeable in this contract? Because it's a contract. It's not a partnership. And they state in here that they're not a partner. No. It says, we're not a partner and we, you know, don't, don't intend to be a partner with Bossier City. So it's not a partnership agreement. It's a privatization, which in result, in the end, it's going to cause my, I know it's been promised, it's been told to every person in every channel, oh, it's not going to raise your water prices. It's not going to do that. I pay a hundred and twenty dollars approximately a month for water, sewage, and trash pickup. Who else is going to take that additional? Okay? You've got an agreement for five years. Well, in the first year, you're using one million and forty-two, seven fifty-five. Then sixty days prior to the next year, you agree for the next year. Well, okay, well, you've got water sewage agreements that you've got to fix. You've got old systems you've got to fix. Manchak's not going to fix these. They're going to contract out, and that's said in the agreement. They're not fixing them. They're contracting out. More money. More money. So what does year two, three, four, and five mean? Two million? Three million? Four million? When do you stop? So, speaking for those eleven people who are dear to my heart and who are here, I say, say no to this. It's not been proved that it's, it's good. There's not a successful case in this situation where it did work. You can't tell me there is one that has worked. It's going to cost the City of Bossier more. Why don't you leave these forty-six employees alone and let them continue to do their job that they've been doing and that they've had? Continue their retirement. Continue their benefits. Continue their life. So on behalf of my daughter, who is a current city employee, I ask you, please, say no. Because my daughter is twenty years old. She was told, get in the City of Bossier. Be proud. You'll learn something. You'll gain something. Manchak coming in and taking over is not learning anything. That's not teaching my twenty-year-old that working for the government is a good thing. So I ask you today, please, with everything in me, as the mom, say no. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Afternoon. I am Heather Kachopoulos, and I live at one seventeen Bobby Street.
What's your name again?
Heather Kachopoulos. I am a spouse of one of the employees. My husband is currently serving our country and will be gone until the thirtieth of July, so I am here to speak on behalf of his concerns. He has been deployed and has evacuated several of you guys from your homes this past flood. With this being said, as you can see, I am currently pregnant. We have a six-year-old daughter and a daughter on the way. I, too, have served, and I am a disabled Army vet of nine years. So of course, income will be limited if his job is lost. So you can say this comes at the worst time of our lives, when I'm supposed to be happy and joyous. And in fact, I'm fearing for the fact that this council will vote to privatize, because that's what this is, our water. I have seen privatized gone horribly wrong with being in the military. We have always gotten our housing privatized, and I can tell you that that forty-year agreement that the Bark still currently has is a living nightmare. They thought they were going to save six million dollars. How about they've spent an additional ten million dollars for the privatization of their houses and their electricity? These are confirmed facts. So how can you say you're going to save three point five million dollars by releasing these forty-six employees? Because all that's going to happen is merely my water bill is going to increase. I've also read, and I've also found, that not, that several members of the council receive money from Manchak as well as the governor, as well as the mayor, excuse me, for campaign rebates. The concern is going to be is that if this board elects it, the forty-six would then lose their job in this merger. This would be a problem for him, seeing as the fact that he would not be able to jump on the bandwagon to find a new job because he's currently serving our governor of the United States, of, currently serving the governor of Louisiana and getting ready for a deployment that he will leave in January. I hope your decision is not to vote this in because it's a crying shame that privatization has destroyed many things. We can also look at Shreveport's privatization for the engineering department. They, too, are facing with astronomical increases in their engineering firm. I've also researched this. The situation doesn't sit right with me for the simple fact that members of the council and the mayor do receive money from Manchak. So how can this not be a conflict of interest if you guys receive money from them and now you want to privatize with them? Thank you.
Any questions, guys? Thank you.
My name is Richard Griswold, retired civil engineer, reside at forty-eight fifty-five Airline Drive, Bossier City. To this agreement, no matter what you say, no matter what's in it, I have no idea why you want to do it. But first of all, it's an omission that y'all have failed to operate a public utility in a good manner. That's a failure on your part to get to this point right here. Y'all could not do it. But now you're going to hire a firm that's never operated a utility, to operate the utility. So it's very difficult to understand what's going on. I don't know, you cannot, there is the contract, but there's no reasons given for this action. I think that you need to put together a report and state with some specificity why you're taking this action. You know, all I, all I know, I heard, there was a news report that this was to gain efficiencies. But that's, that's not going to gain any efficiencies. Replacing people that know what they're doing, take pride in their work, with people that have never done this work doesn't seem to be very efficient to me. So I think you got to be very careful about what you're doing. I'd suggest that you table this or get rid of this right away and communicate with the public more often. You need to communicate with the ratepayers, and you need to communicate with the employees. Because the way y'all have treated your employees is sad. It's terrible. Because they're all out there right now. They don't know what's going to happen to them. They don't know whether they need to go look for a job. They don't know what to do. They're, they're in limbo. And, you know, the agreement shows that a lot of, there's going to be a number of people that's not going to be here. And there are some good people. And there's two superintendents here today that is as good as you're going to find anywhere. So if, if Manchak puts somebody in there, they won't be any better than what you have right now. Strongly think that you reconsider this. I think you need to also reconsider your entire association with Manchak. Y'all's management of their contracts is pitiful. You have allowed them to operate with no oversight. Things could be done a lot better. A lot of money could be saved currently and in future. They've built in a lot of future costs that y'all are not aware of in their projects. So my request would be that you take this contract and tear it up and research it some more. I think if you, if you're going to go forward with it, though, and you want to go forward with it, I think you should hire a, a law firm that is experienced in public-private partnerships to represent you. Because you're not getting the best side of this contract. So that's all I have to say, and I hope this is over, and thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you, Mr. Griswold. Anyone else like to speak?
I'm Michael Walllett. I live at seven oh seven Pine Acres Road. I am one of the employees that stands to have a chance of losing this job. I am currently the superintendent over the distribution and collection system here in Bossier. My department, according to the contract that was presented to y'all, stands to lose the most employees out of it. We currently have thirty-one in my department. Y'all are going, it's going to be cut down to sixteen. I am currently down five people right now. Two due deployment, one, this lady's husband, and another one. I have two that left when they heard about this, and y'all have put a hiring freeze, so I've not been able to replace them. And then I have one that had a triple bypass surgery three weeks ago. I am doing all I can do just to keep afloat, only being down five people. This will never work. If you go to the numbers that they have listed there, there's absolutely no way that eight people in lift stations can check over a hundred lift stations every day. It's not possible. It's physically impossible. And I, I'm doing all I can do, like I said, to keep afloat with sewer problems, the water issues that we have. And one other thing, the numbers just don't make sense on this contract. Most of the employees that are going to be let go in this based off of first, last hire, first fire process are, make less than eleven dollars an hour. So I don't see how you could save three point five million dollars on that process. Because based off what I've seen, it's just not physically possible. Thank you.
Could I ask you, presently, you're, you're, you're transmission and distribution?
Yes, sir.
So right now, your, your authorized employee count is thirty-two?
I have thirty-one in my department, counting myself.
You have thirty-one now?
Yes. No, I have that many positions authorized, yes, in my department.
But how many work for, how many are working in that department?
Currently, at this time, I have two office personnel and, I'm trying to think, we'll take five away from thirty-one. That's where I'm at right now.
Oh, okay. Okay, I didn't understand that. Good. So, yeah, twenty?
I have five five-man repair crews. Well, four repair crews. One is an ionic crew that does sewer repair, that goes out and unstops sewer mains and things of the sort. I have two assistant superintendents, two office personnel, and a engineering aide, and then myself that's in my department.
Well, I'm, I'm sensitive to what y'all are saying, but I, I have seen the work that Manchak has done and, from the consulting side, not from the management side, and it seems to be competent. But, but the thing that I do think would be helpful to know, I, I, I've read this entire contract. I've listened to the presentation and the reasoning on it. But, but one thing that, that I have not been presented with, which I would value, that would help, I think, everyone see this, is, is if we are going to, if we're going to absorb, if we're going to eliminate that many jobs, one thing that makes a lot of sense to me is to have at least a, a tally that's, that has the position there. Presently, whatever that person in that position is doing. And then the next box ought to say who's going to do what they're doing now. So, so someone who wanted to, in a bona fide way, critique this could say, well, you can't do that, or you can't do that. So that, that seems like a logical and legitimate step to take in, in consolidation is to, is to show what happens to half of the personnel in any one department. And it would seem that we certainly need to know that anyway. And, and I tend to agree with what Richard said, you know, it, it would be a, a shame and deplorable if, if, if we have that many people employed and, and the box says they're doing nothing, you know. So I dare say it's probably not going to say that. And then there, there may be some way that, that their work is more efficiently accomplished. But I, I, I think that would be a good thing to have, and it may exist, and I just haven't, haven't seen it yet. But I would love to see what happens when, when somebody takes thirty-six positions out of an enterprise and says, we don't need that anymore, and here's how what they were doing is going to get done. So, appreciate your comments.
Yes?
I'm Marcus Cooper. I'm currently forming over your sewer, your fire hydrant and valve. And I can speak for, on behalf for the guys that's threatened by what may could happen. Every day we come in, we get it. I mean, throughout the night, oh, excuse me, throughout the night, like I said, we got, we got a guy out right now that can work his butt off and almost died. Can't replace that. It's kind of sad to say, how could someone just come in and pull some jobs from taxpayers that's here, that's trying to survive, trying to restore a future? I disagree. But all the group of guys that I work with, I go to bat with them every time. It's just sad to even consider cutting anything. Took us years to get a raise. We out here, y'all water and y'all sewer fine. All residents having a problem. Oh, low water pressure, two in the morning. We get up and go. Rodden, everyone asleep. I think we do a great job. And like Mr., what's his name said, I think y'all should consider paying a little more attention to the employees y'all do have. Any questions?
What, you're, you're, generally speaking, your job in the department is?
Forming over fire hydrants and valves.
Okay.
And George, every fire hydrant in the city, all the valves. We got contractors going around doing their job. So it's hard for me to keep up with whatever they tear up because I had to come right behind them and remake repairs while I'm out making repairs. I only have four guys. So without myself and two more of them, that's going to leave one. Hiring a contractor in that knows nothing to fire hydrants is fighting a losing battle. Fighting a losing battle. Tearing it down gut for gut, piece for piece, bolt by bolt, and replacing it, it's not easy. And you're going to have to be trained. So I really would consider y'all pretty much leaving things alone, taking a better look at it. I would really appreciate it. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, for the record, I guess, Mr. Roshenbach, could you...
Yeah, for the record, um, I guess, Mr. Roshanback, could you come up, please? Just to, uh, what I wanna do is provide some clarity. There's been reference to a savings of three point five million. I don't know where that came from. But just to set the record straight with the media and the taxpayers and everybody here today, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, it's roughly three point one gross. If you subtract what we're gonna pay Man Shack, it's somewhere around two million dollar savings. Is that correct?
Correct.
Alright, so I just wanted to counsel and everybody here to understand, it's roughly two million dollars a first year, not three and a half. Ma'am, you need to come to the mic, please, if you'd like to speak.
Sorry, um, I also do commercial insurance for a living, and I know numbers very well. It's still physically not possible for you to save that kinda money. You're, you're gonna waste more money than saving.
I was just, for the record, it was being quoted three point five million, and that's not the case, so it's roughly two million.
Can I, can I get you to answer just a couple of things? We know that the Man Shack group has contract currently with the city. So, based on this new agreement, what happens with the current contracts you have, and how many do you have currently?
We have two contracts with the city currently in the operational phase environment for the, the city of Bossier. One for your wastewater plant, and one for your water treatment facility. Uh, those will continue. Uh, this particular public-private partnership contract will augment that and look at the entire utility department, um, as a whole.
Okay. Do, do you see, Mr. Hall, if, if this agreement in any shape, form, or fashion overlap in what they are currently doing? Is there, is there any overlap?
No, I think it, I think it's a whole new, uh, area of, of operational, uh, consulting, really, that they're gonna be doing.
Okay. Cause I would be concerned about that, you know, being the case, but if not, I can really appreciate the city not having to raise the, the rates in the future, water rates, for people who can least afford it. So, that being my thinking, if this is going to prevent that, I, I have to be in, in favor of it because of it. But I am concerned as well, um, the projected saving. And, and, and I would like to hope that we can, we can track the saving to the city. And I asked Mr. Buffington to come forward too, to, to, um, to address that possibility in the future. Be able to track what we really save, maybe on a quarterly basis, coming forward council, give us that number?
Again, we report to you now on a monthly basis, all the actual results. Again, we have the historical numbers, obviously, uh, you know, that are audited by our external audit firm every year. So that, you know, those are good reliable numbers. So again, knowing what the actual results are going forward, you always have the comparison basis there to draw, you know, your conclusions from.
Okay. Ju- just to be clear, we will know if those savings are realized?
Yes, sir. I mean, it'll show up in the number, I guess.
That's, that's most critical. Also, um, Ben, there, in your agreement, there's a time when you come before, I guess, the council or the administration and give, uh, reports?
Yes, sir.
Under, um, I think it's?
I believe the way the contract's written, we give a six-month?
Yeah.
Update to the council?
Mm-hmm.
And then we provide an annual report?
Annual, right. Are those the same? Uh, I mean?
No.
They're, they're not the same? Okay, cause I was, I was curious about that.
Probably includes similar data, but our presentation to the council would be different than?
Yeah.
Than what the physical report would be that we would provide.
Yeah, under section, uh, three point oh two, you, you give, um, annual status of, of the, um, operation and management. And then under section five point oh four, you, you give a bi-annual?
Right.
Okay, alright. So they're, they're different a little bit?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I, I think we have in here also where the, um, public utility director, uh, continues to be in place with this agreement?
That's correct.
Okay, alright. So are we losing, are we losing any experience in, in having your group to, to, to take over management operation?
From the perspective of employees that withhold the highest certification for the city to operate within the confines of the health department, uh, there's no intent to let those employees, uh, you, you need to keep them, uh, to, to maintain, uh, your operational certifications that are required by the state of Louisiana. This contract will augment those with additional staff by Man Shack that will have certifications uh, that come with years of experience and expertise to help assist them with their maintenance and operation efforts.
Okay. That number forty versus forty-six, is that?
Not sure exactly where that's coming from.
That, that's, that's?
Let's see, um, I think the only other thing I wanted to ask, Mr. President, in the way of transparency on the part of administration, is there a need to inform persons who might be impacted, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, they certainly have a right to be told. Specifically, we're still working our way through the process to try to comply with the last end first app, but also try to retain those people who have the right certifications and experience level. So we're going through that process right now, and I would have hoped that we could have notified them before public meeting. We were not able to do that, and so I regret that. But yes, they need to be told and told specifics.
Yes, sir. And what's, what's the transitional timeframe from, from the city not being in management and operation to Man Shack being in management operation?
What's effective date of the contract, Jimmy?
This is introduced today. It'll be adopted two weeks from today, if it's adopted, and, and, uh, then the implementation would take place in July.
July first?
Sometime in July.
Sometime July.
And the employees have become on the operational control of Man Shack, but they remain administratively assigned to the Department of Public Utilities under Mr. Bell.
Bill should be city employees, I think was misrepresented a while ago.
Exactly.
So you would think for the next two weeks, between the administration and HR, before we adopt this contract, everybody should be notified?
Oh, absolutely. I think, uh, yes. And, uh, I think we can expect as we get into this, there's some, uh, a learning curve to go through. We'll discover things that we'll have to work out, but we believe the framework is there to work effectively. But we know we're gonna have some implementation issues that we'll have to deal with.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Is there, do you have a? You know, y'all came and sat down and talked with me and, and related a lot of things, but I, I didn't, um, the, the one thing I would like to understand is, is how, how you can lay off forty-six people and accomplish what they were doing. And, and, um, that gives me great concern, just, just to know how you can do that. I, I can't see how you can do that. I'm not saying you can't do it. So, do you have a, do you have a, do you have a matrix there that shows what these people are doing, and then how that's going to now be accomplished?
We've been looking at a number of various components of information that the utility department has. One with regard to running your ru- water and wastewater facilities, uh, making sure that you have the appropriate certifications there on site during every shift. From our research, we believe that, uh, the city can adequately, adequately cover those because we're not intending to, uh, lose any certified operators within your, uh, treatment divisions. As it relates to, uh, your water and wastewater management division, in looking at the statistics of last year, how many physical repairs that were performed? You know, we, we came up with, now, these are repairs, not inspections or call-outs, but somewhere in the neighborhood of three hundred and forty repairs, uh, within your, your distribution system. You know, assuming that you've got two hundred and forty effective workdays, and you combine your, your, your staffing, it's, it's more than eight in the lift station division. You're looking at eleven there, prob- possibly with, uh, sixteen. So somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty folks, including the Man Shack people, to cover your distribution and collection system, uh, we feel is more than adequate, um, to operate efficiently and effectively, um, and reduce, uh, cost to the city.
And, and so what are the forty-six doing? I mean, we're, we're firing those people. What are they doing? Nothing?
Specifically, I would, I would imagine they're out and, and working. But I don't know the day-to-day ins and outs of all forty-six of those employees.
Well, a, a thoughtful person would say that there's some possibility that what they're doing is not gonna get done. And when you find out, you're gonna have to get them back. And so, tha- that's why I was thinking it would be good to have a piece of paper that tells me that.
Sure.
So, a- a- and, and of course, any business can reduce costs by reducing the service to their customers. And, um, you know, the, I think, I think everybody in the city certainly wants the most water they can get for the least they pay. But, um, like if these people are out, you know, fixing meters, or I, I don't know what they do. I mean, I've seen, had an experience or two where somebody came to my house, you know, Sunday night, fixed a meter that was busted. But, um, these, the, 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 the service side of things, I think it would be good for us to know, to understand that. And so, I, I ju- I just request a, uh, you know, a, some kind of a document that's gonna show me what they're doing is gonna get, e- e- either doesn't need to get done, or they're not doing anything, or it can be consolidated logically into a more thoughtful, systemized thing. And, and I just do not know that right now, and, and, and I certainly should, if I'm gonna vote for this. So I'd like to get that.
Okay.
Understand it. I also have some other questions, but they're, they're just innocuous ones that I'd like to sit down with y'all and just go through this, just to?
Sure.
Absorb it, but, um, that, uh, the one that analyzes what happened to these people, I would, I would just love to see that, that, that analysis. That's my only comments and questions.
Ben, let me ask you, you might not be able to answer this. Is it forty-six, or has that been exaggerated, forty-six, or last I heard it was thirty-eight, forty, or?
The ordinance, as I appreciate, reads forty employees, or approximately forty employees, so that's, that's our understanding. And our goal and objective will be to work within the confines of the ordinance to make sure that you have a very efficient and effective utility department.
Ms. Williams, just to further that, I mean, the, the mayor just spoke that he's still in this process. So I, I don't know the advantage of debating whether it's forty to forty-six. It probably could be anywhere in between those two numbers, based on, you know, their analysis.
Exactly. Any more questions for Ben? Thank you, Ben. Thank you. Counsel, any questions for anyone?
I apologize, I wasn't gonna speak today.
Well, you have to be the last one, okay.
Okay. Well, my name's Kim Bardet. I'm the superintendent of the Bossier City Water Plant. I've been here, well, not quite as long as Jimmy has. But I've been here a long time. I've seen privatizations come, they try to get in, and they don't. But the only thing I wanna ask is, the council, come out and see what we do. I've been here a long time. I've seen Mr. Montgomery come out to my plant, I see it. Come out and see what we do before you, you know, judge us and get rid of us. We're talking forty-six people. I'm not here to talk about myself. I'm talking about my employees. Mr. Darby, you've been here a long time. I remember when you left, you came back cause of your brother. Do you recall?
When I came back, when?
When your brother had some issues, you came back on the council because you got mad. You straightened out the problem. That was back in the eighties. But regardless.
Okay.
But what I'm doing is, is I'm talking for my employees. I got employees that do record-keeping. I got operators that I'm training to become class fours, which I have to have. But every time I get them up to a class four, they go to Shreveport because they pay three dollars more an hour. So, again, I have three operators, I'm training, trying to get them to a class four. But now, we're talking about getting rid of them. So, how can we get up there? How can we get to a class four plant? Privat- privatization is not the answer. The answer is you have good employees. Just keep them, just pay them where they don't leave, and then we don't have to worry about this. So, I invite you, come out, look at our plants, look at distribution, look at the wastewater plants, come out. I'd like to see you. I'll buy you a cup of coffee. Just come see what we do before you judge us, or get rid of us. Y'all have a good day.
You too. You have, under your supervision, you have twenty-six?
I have twenty-two. I have one that's not filled. But when I started in nineteen eighty-five, we had sixteen employees. On your ledger, there's only fifteen, so we're going backwards. The city's getting bigger, but the employees are getting smaller. The math don't work. I'm, the city of Bossier is my life. You know, I will give everything that I have for the city of Bossier. I'm just asking for a little bit back. You know, take care of your employees. Don't get rid of them. Again, come see me. The cop pot's always on. Y'all have a good day.
Mr. Bardet, did you write your name and address down?
If I can spell.
Counsel, any questions?
I got eight houses. Do you want all of them?
I just want your, your main location where you live at. Where do you sleep at night?
Um, I was just thinking, uh, Mr. Larkin mentioned having other issues that, that he would like to look at. And I don't, I don't mind having more dialogue on the, uh, agreement with the administration. Is there a necessity to rush this agreement at this point, Mr. Hall?
The only thing is the savings that would come from the agreement aren't gonna show up until the implementation of the plan. You know, and of course, you're talking about tracking them, so the tracking will be later, and there'll be, uh, those things. I mean, I, 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 I think what the, the problem is with Mr. Larkin's question is, he's wanting to find out what people do. Well, you know, at the end of the day, you can put a name and, and a position up there, but, but knowing what they do all day is a whole different, different thing. So, I mean, you, you're, you're gonna either ha- have to buy into the idea that there's gonna be more efficiency in the operation, but you're not gonna get a piece of paper that's gonna tell you what that person does every day. I've been down that road.
Come see. Come see what they do.
The, the issue came up regarding experience of management on the part of Man Shack. Is that something that the administration is concerned about, that they don't have that experience to, to manage the systems?
The administration's concerned about it. It's the same thing that I'm sure the council's concerned about, is this is an enter- enterprise fund, and it's not paying for itself. And we, uh, only have about two choices, I appreciate it. That is to raise fees, or to operate more efficiently and reduce the costs.
Along with the mayor, I'm sorry, were you, no. Along the train of thought, if, if you will go back in time and understand what generated the question is when Mr. Buffington started presenting the water and sewer results. And if you'll recall, um, when we raised rates for the last time, we were gonna have a nine hundred thou- this was on sewer, nine hundred thousand dollar surplus. Do y'all recall that?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
And then we were gonna save, I wish Mr. Holt was here, but, um, roughly a million and something?
Million and a half.
Or nine hundred and seventy-five thousand on the refinancing, okay? So we were gonna have roughly two million dollar surplus a year, correct? Mr. Buffington? So, and, in his report, it was quite the opposite. We were millions of dollars in the hole. And, and, and as always, like I say, numbers don't lie, they are what they are. We went through this in two thousand and nine, we had to fire in the police and the rest of the employees, they were laid off, and no one likes that. But when you're operating at a deficit, you cannot continue down that road, and, uh, Mr. Williams and the rest of the councils heard me say this time and time again. This is what's wrong with the federal government, it's what's wrong with the state government, deficit spending.
Exactly.
And here we are today, we're in the hole, millions of dollars, and we can't afford to do that. We are not gonna raise rates again, I made a pledge the last time we did that, and we can go on the record and look and get, and Phyllis can pull the minutes. So our alternative was to take a look at the efficiency of the water and sewer operations.
But we're gonna.
Let me.
Okay.
I have the floor, please, sir.
Please.
And so what we did at that point, and I don't know whether it was seven or eight months ago, along with the administration, was had Man Shack, who was already in here, uh, under several contracts, come in and provide an analysis of what was going on in the water and sewer department. Through that analysis resulted this contract, and this, and this has all been developed over seven, eight months, of them being an integral part of what's going on. And you know as well as I do that we can start talking about millions of dollars of expenses where there was neglect, both in the water and the sewer departments. Cliff, excuse me. Cliff can provide that, Mr. Buffington, we have it all on the record. So in, what we, while we're here today in presenting this document, is to protect the integrity of the enterprise fund so that the citizens of Bozier City do not have to pay higher water and sewer rates. And again, I go back to the numbers. We have to right the ship, just as we did in two thousand and nine, we were three eight, three point eight million dollars in the hole. We had to take those necessary steps. I feel as though the city's operating, and the mayor can concur, if he wishes, that we're operating efficiently. The fire chief, the police chief feel like we're hitting on all eight cylinders. The rest of the city, we hadn't seen a decline in services, and we believe that this is a necessary step with the water and sewer here in two thousand and sixteen, a necessary step to take to get that ship righted to where it's making money again.
May I speak?
Yes, sir.
Alright, so to right this ship, we're gonna hire managers to manage the managers. At any point, did anybody get the superintendents together and say, hey, we have issues, we need to straighten out these issues? We need to see if we cut corners before we lay off. That hasn't happened. We're a team, just be a team, just work together, get with us, let us help you, we serve you, our job is to make you look good. I would love to make you look lovely. Let us do our job.
Why did the council have to intervene?
I don't know, why?
Because we're, I just explained it. Millions of dollars, deficit spending.
Where is the deficit spending coming from, me?
Mr. Buffington prevents the financial results.
Hmm. I don't see that.
You don't see the deficit?
I don't see the numbers, I, I run a water plant, I don't get the numbers.
You're the director of the water plant, and you don't?
I'm superintendent.
Superintendent of the water plant, and you don't know the operations from a numerical standpoint?
I see what I spend in my budget, which is very minimal compared to the whole city.
Do you s- do you submit any numbers to Mr. Buffington from a budgetary standpoint?
No, I do not, the only thing I submit is capital at the end of the year.
Do you have any part or process in submitting numbers or ver- validating numbers that are used in the budget?
No.
So you don't know what anything costs?
I know what I buy, but I don't know what everybody else pays. I can't tell you that we have a big hole right here.
To your position in the water plant.
My position at the water plant is to keep it running, safe, pure water, fix what needs to be repaired, but I'm not gonna go out and buy a brand-new GMC pickup.
Well, we're getting off track, it's deficit spending, and it's gonna stop.
Agreed, and it needs to, just work together and make it stop. I'm, I'm good with that. But seriously, come on, get a cup of coffee, I'll sit down and talk with you, just go over my budget. I would love to do that. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introducing ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the attached grant.
Mr. Williams, will you please?
Yeah.
Hey. Caution the people that this council meeting, and if you speak, you will come to the microphone.
We're, we're still conducting a meeting, and don't, please don't make us escort you out by the marshal's office, okay, just. Alright, Phyllis.
Introducing an ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the attached grants of right-of-way and servitude, first reading.
So move.
Second. Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. We'll take a little minute so everybody can depart. Alright, Phyllis.
Introducing an ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to sign a cancellation of a cooperative endeavor agreement between the city of Bozier City and Bel Air Baptist Church dated October sixth, two thousand and four, first reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. Counsel, before we close, anybody have anything? Not mayor?
I would like, just officially request that those positions and what those people do, and I, I don't, and I'll just take whatever you produce, uh, whether it says every single thing they do all day long, I, not after that, I'd just like to know.
Do the best we can to develop a document.
What they do.
Yes, we can.
Good, thank you.
Mayor, got anything?
No, thank you. Meeting dismissed.